As this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely. The Lunenburg, the town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance of the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently open to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Lodge, General Law 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access to the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by Zoom video conference, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Using an internet-enabled device, go to the Zoom application and enter the meeting ID number or call 888-475-4499. And you will, for this meeting, be entering ID number 854-0329-8221. That number again is 854-0329-8221. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Please be aware, anything you show on your screen will be recorded and could be distributed forever. We don't allow screen sharing, so please don't try. I'll turn it over to the Chair for the open of the meeting.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you, Adam, for that. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board. We have called to order. So the first item on our agenda is board reorganization. So I think all of us, but Matt, Matt might have been through one of these.
I think he was.
Okay, so basically, just to refresh, we'll take nominations for three positions: for Chair, for Vice Chair, and for Clerk. If we have more than one nomination for any position, you can only vote for one. So if you wanna... Actually, I get confused sometimes, but there usually isn't much addition. Anyways, so, that having been said, so we'll first start with the Chair position. Are there any nominations? Okay, I'll start with saying that I've been Chair for a while and I'm used to it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say I'm good at it, but I get it done. And I don't have to be Chair. So if there's anybody that's aspiring, you can throw your hat in the ring and... That's fine. I'm not sure about nominating yourself, but it wouldn't be the first time. So...
And technically, you can nominate yourself.
You can nominate anyone who's a sitting member of the Board.
Sure. Okay.
Myself, but I'd be interested in being Chair, but wouldn't go as far to nominate myself for the position.
Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion to nominate Tanner Cole as Chair.
Okay. Is there a...
I would second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominees? I think that's how it goes, right? You get all the nom...
You get all the nominations and then vote.
So are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Matthew Allison for Chair.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Hearing none. There is only one nomination for Chair. That would be Tanner Cole. Any other nominations? I know there's only five of us. Actually, four.
Four.
Four. So, okay, so all in favor of Tanner Cole being Chair? By roll call vote, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Congratulations!
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll move on to the next position. It's Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would make a motion to nominate Matthew Allison as Vice Chair if he would like to.
Okay. And yeah, I'm on the Board, so... Sure, I would like to. So there's a second. A motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none. Okay, roll call vote. All in favor of Matthew Allison for Vice Chair. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Congratulations to me. Okay, and so third position is Chair.
Clerk.
Clerk. You're right, the other C-word. And I'm, I don't see that we specify on the agenda, probably because it's nomination time or reorganization. Not sure who was Clerk.
I am currently.
I believe Paula was.
Okay, so on this Board, it's not a big deal because we have an administrator who does the minutes. And as far as I can tell, that's, well, unless the Chair and the Vice Chair are not present, and the Clerk would chair the meeting.
Yeah, it's essentially ceremonial.
Right, so since there's five of us, effectively four, that probably wouldn't happen.
Right, because we couldn't have a meeting, so...
Okay, so are there nominations for Chair? Clerk, the other C-word.
I would nominate Paula Bertram, again for Clerk.
If she's willing?
I am.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Are there any other nominations for Clerk? Hearing none. All in favor, roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent, we are reorganized.
And the happy news is, Mr. Chair, you get to turn it, or Mr. Vice Chair, you get to turn it over to the Chair now for the rest of it.
Exactly. Mr. Cole, would you like to take, take the leads?
Certainly.
Excellent.
We also need to fill all of our committee slots as well, correct?
Except for capital planning.
Okay.
Which is a three-year seat.
Okay. So MRPC, that's currently, Mr. Brenner, would you like to continue in that role, Mr. Brenner?
I am happy to continue on that role. If someone else is like, "Ooh, boy, I really want to go to these meetings", I'm happy to serve somewhere else too, but I feel like I continue to learn there.
Any nominations for MRPC?
I would nominate Matthew Brenner.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. All right. MJTC, that's currently Mr. Brenner as well, correct?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to continue to fulfill in that capacity?
I am happy to continue there as well.
I would make a motion to appoint Matthew Brenner as the MJTC liaison member.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mr. Brenner for MJTC representatives? By roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Capital planning, we're all set. Open space, Mrs. Bertram?
Yes, I currently serve on open space and am very interested in continuing to do so.
All right. Any nominations for open space?
I would nominate Paula Bertram for open space.
I would second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mrs. Bertram for open space by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Stormwater Task Force. That is currently Mr. Allison, correct?
Yep. I'm not married to it, but I've been on it since its inception, and there's only three of us. So it would make sense for me to continue. And again, I'm not married to it, except if somebody else has passion for it. I'd be surprised, but...
I actually do have a passion for it, but I'm concerned that it may be a conflict of interest, potentially because we have a stormwater problem on Hickory Hills Lake that we're going to actually be bringing to the attention of the town. So I think it would be too much of a conflict for me to serve on the task force.
Well, I'm gonna be perfectly frank and open here. We've had a drainage problem on Flat Hill Road for 20 years, 20 years from a development. And I don't feel conflicted at all because I don't bring it up. That's not what the Stormwater Task Force was charged with. Stormwater Task Force was developed and charged with finding a way to pay for this unfunded mandate from the state.
Okay, is that actually what the charter says?
I'm pretty sure that's what the charge was, and I think we've lost...
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a charter committee. It's a task force that was formed by the Select Board.
Okay.
I mean, the mandate could change if the Select Board chose to change it, but originally it was developed, it was created for compliance with the Phase 2 permit and to explore various funding options for the mandated requirements of that permit.
Well, and specifically, my concerns are relative to the regulations of the MS-4. We just had a storm, this is a whole other topic, but we actually just had a complete study of the lake done. And we have found that our lake is very high in phosphorus, and the cause of that is polluted stormwater. And we're actually funding a stormwater consultant to look at where the contaminant is coming from and what is going on within the watershed. So that study will take place this summer. But we have significant concerns about improvements within the stormwater infrastructure owned by the town to address the stormwater inflow into the lake. So whether it's the task force, whether it's DPW, whether it's the Selectmen, it needs to be addressed. And so I'm very interested in stormwater. I always have been. You guys know that. I also think that we have to find a way to pay for stormwater, and I think we need to develop a stormwater utility. And I know I was on the Board when the Stormwater Task Force was created. And my understanding at that time was to look at the possibility of a stormwater utility and also to work, look at funding opportunities to implement some of the recommendations of the MS-4. So, you know, I'm very interested in serving, but I want to make sure there isn't a conflict.
I would nominate Paula Bertram for Stormwater Task Force.
I would second that.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye. Thank you.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
So I am very happily taking the nomination, but I am going to check with Town Council and make sure that I don't have a conflict. So if I do, I will come back to this Board.
We appreciate that. And my only thought along those lines is I know conservation has run into issues where a lot of the residents, or a lot of the people that serve on the commission, live on lakes in town or have wetlands on their property. We're a small town, and it's gonna be overlapped. It's bound to happen here or there. But I think, at the same time, those, what may appear to be conflicts can also be strengths because you have a better understanding of the situation. You live on a lake, you see the impacts, and you have a better feel for the big picture, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Valid point. I also am concerned about Lake Shirley stormwater as well, so that's a valid point. And hopefully, that's what Town Council will agree to, so...
Excellent. TCP BDC. I guess my... Yes, and I guess my only question there is, I would assume that this committee is going to have an updated charge due to town meeting. But that's under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, I should say. It'll always be the Board of Selectmen as far as I'm concerned.
And if I remember when they created it correctly, the intent was that that committee is chartered for the actual construction project, and they just kind of pulled it back into the design and pre-construction phase, figuring that if, if the town moved forward with the project, they would leave the committee at play. I think you're right, where they, we will see a shift in that, not only from town meeting, but based on whatever the long-term outcome of that is.
One, I don't foresee the Select Board wanting to reformulate the committee, but certainly, demoing a building and building a new structure is significantly different than the old, but I...
But I think, I think it's similar to when they built the high school. And in, and the committee was formed under that same clause of the charter.
Yep. Well, we can go ahead.
We'll find out.
What happens with it, right? Mr. Allison, would you like to continue to serve in that capacity?
Willing.
Any nominations for the TCP BDC?
I would nominate, I would nominate Matthew Allison.
You know, second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right. And economic development?
That's currently me. We've only had one meeting. Something I'm very interested in continuing, but also willing to allow someone else if they would like to.
Any nominations?
I would nominate Paula Bertram.
I'd second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right. We're all reorganized. All right. Our next appointment is an A&R for 388 and 390 Goodrich Street?
Mr. Chair, we have public comment, and I do a member of the public with their hand raised. So phone number 8430?
Are they muted?
Yes.
They are. I've asked them to unmute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. This is William Chisholm.
Oh, did you have a public comment, or you just...
No.
A&R.
I'm the owner of 388 and 390 Goodrich Street, and I have an A&R online there to change the property line. On...
Is there someone else with you who's also on the phone?
No, I don't see anybody.
Oh, well.
I don't, no. Let me, no. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Just a moment.
Just a moment, Mr. Chisholm. Do we have any public comments?
That is...
I don't think we do.
Uh, yeah, they have not unmuted, so I...
Okay. Any Board?
I'm sorry, I'm here if you need me.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll move forward with the A&R for 388 and 390 Goodrich Street. Mr. Chisholm, would you like to give us a quick synopsis of... Yep.
Is any better now? Can you hear me?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay, okay, here we go. I'm sorry about that.
If you could just give us a quick ex, explanation of what you're doing with the lot line. It looks like you're just adjusting one lot line.
Just adjusting it. I'm selling 390, and I had a, I had a closing on it. Jim Griffey had to sign it. He was, had a meeting or he had something with the state probably two weeks ago. So I did have a closing on the 20th, but we had to put it off. But I'm closing, I'm selling 390, and I'm keeping 388. So I just want to straighten that line out. It's a hay field. And we, you know, we use it for hay. So I just want to straighten that, that lot line out between the two lots while I still own it.
Okay. So the original lot line was this funny little jag?
Yeah, exactly.
Comes straight across.
I just want to go straight across, yep.
380 is out front, 390 is up back.
Right, correct, correct, yep.
Any questions on the A&R as it's proposed for any members of the Board?
Just a question, and it really doesn't affect the status of the A&R, but I'm just curious on your existing home, Mr. Chisholm. You mentioned Jim Griffey. Did you have to, did you have to have your septic system inspected, or...
No, what happened on the permit, I guess, to give to the Board, he had to sign it off.
Okay.
He, I wanted to get on the meeting for last week, but he had some, he promised me to get to it. But by Thursday, when they, when they put it on the agenda, he hadn't got there, so that's why we were on for this week. Well, that's the only thing. He had no problem, yeah.
Because of the size of the lots, he's able to provide reserve area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I would... I would make a motion to approve the A&R for Goodrich Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
And Mr. Chisholm?
Yes.
You had mentioned to me today that you have a closing on the 30th of this month. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. I pushed it up to the 30th, it was to be the 31st. I think 30th is on a Sunday or something. But it, so it would have to be the first. I think it's the first, they moved it to the first, if possible.
So if at least three of you folks could come in in the next couple of days and sign that for Mr. Chisholm, it would be appreciated, I believe.
Very appreciated. Thank you.
Adam, what time does the office open tomorrow? We're open 8 to 6 tomorrow. Great, I can, I'll swing by after I drop off the boys. Sounds good.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thanks again. You too. Stay safe. Bye-bye.
All right, next item on our agenda is Mr. David Mackey for a bylaw discussion, which this is a follow-up to a discussion we've had previously regarding two-family dwellings and some language in the bylaw. Mr. Mackey, would you like to go through your slides with us?
Sure. Thank you very much for giving me the time to present this idea. Can we move to the next slide, please?
Adam, could you move the toolbar off just so the slide is bigger? Just hit the little arrow next to organize pages.
Yep, it just, that's where I put all you guys when I...
Okay, okay, sorry.
So the proposal is to Lunenburg Bylaws, Section 250-4.1. I think you call it subsection 5. I'm not sure if I'm addressing it correctly. But the current, that I pulled off of the Mass site for this, the current language is, is in the upper section, and the proposed change is below. What it will do is add the ability for a landowner to build a two-family, not just adjoining walls, but also by adjoining floors and having a private entrance, but not necessarily two outside private entrances. Next slide, please. So the reasoning for the proposal, it is allowable for fire codes. We can look at some of the developments that have gone in Lunenburg. They're, they're two and three stories high. The fire codes obviously would have to be met. But there's no restriction for that. The density change, I mean, a two-family home is a, is still a two-family home, whether you're adjoining the floors or walls. The regulation change would actually bring about a slightly better environment for new constructions. So you're using less excavation, concrete roofing, impervious ground is reduced, and there's less CO2 emitted from all the building materials and future maintenance. So the roofing, as it, as it needs to be replaced, is less because you're taking essentially a building that was sprawled out horizontally and stacking it vertically. So you save, save on materials there. I haven't heard, you know, a real well-defined, clear reason for why the floors, adjoining floors are not allowed. So I'm just leaving that here as a bullet point. Maybe it can be addressed later. Next slide, please. I believe it, we should have an option to build a building, you know, vertically and not side by side. I think it fits better with the existing homes because it would have a single outside door leading to a shared foyer. And that facade looks like a two-family home. So there'd be a stairwell that's shared between the two units, but that's on the inside of the house. So it'd be pretty difficult to determine that it's, that it's actually a two-story, I'm sorry, a two-family home in a, in a neighborhood where, obviously, when you drive by a duplex, you know it is just by looking at it. I think there's a benefit that we'd improve the stock of single-level housing units by leaving that first floor available as one unit for handicapped persons or seniors who can't handle the stairs as they age. And then, you know, in terms of the housing crisis, we look at a 7% rise over the last 10 years. That's nearly 500,000 people. We've got to look at beyond our, our town border here that, that we shouldn't be erecting an economic barrier to people moving into the town. By building things vertically, it does save quite a bit of cost, so that lowers housing prices a little bit anyway. It's not, it's not a massive number, but it is moving in the right direction whenever all of our other costs are going higher. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So I just included a few links here. There are, uh, movements out there today that have risen to the presidential level. They're calling some of the zoning that's out there that's highly restrictive exclusionary, exclusionary, sorry. Um, there are some movements in, uh, towns that they're eliminating single-family zoning altogether. Uh, that's not at all my proposal here. It's simply to allow you to adjoin floors, um, to make it a little bit more inclusive, uh, maybe lower the cost of, of housing a little bit. I included the links. People can look at those later if, if you haven't had a chance. Next slide, please. So again, the, the benefit is to, uh, allowing the removal of stairs and combining, um, two units into a single footprint. And then I, the second bullet here, it looks like the costs that a builder has to, um, account for, really the only way they can accommodate those rising costs is by building a larger and larger house. So we see very few, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen any one, uh, one-bedroom houses built because the costs are too high. Uh, we've seen a, a few two-fa- uh, sorry, two-bedroom houses built, but most of them are three or four. Um, the houses seem to be getting larger and larger. Even as I look at, at my own land, um, building a smaller house is, is extremely difficult. Just, just today, I got a quote from a modular builder to build a two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,350 square foot, energy-efficient home. Um, and the total price was $450,000 per unit. So, um, the, the housing pricing is just, it's out of reach. Next slide, please. So this is the proposal. And there's the current for discussion. I think there's one more slide. And it's just that I think we need to think of other people beyond the folks in this town. We've got to think of the, the folks in Massachusetts and throughout the country. And, and try to benefit everyone with what I think is a pretty small change. I don't know if you want to go back to the other slide and just talk about that language, but that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, uh, one question and then we can open it up to the rest of the board. As I understand it, Mr. Mackey, this will be your proposal at town meeting and you're so looking for our input on it? Or are you suggesting that the planning board present this article at town meeting?
Uh, the latter.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Mackey?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm just questioning on the proposed. I, I agree with everything up to the last few words, but not necessarily occupying a private lot. I think that's a little bit confusing because it's a single residential structure on a single lot. I, I'm just, I just was questioning that wording at the end and what the rationale was for adding that.
I, I didn't change it at all from the current language. So that from the comma, the button is not necessarily occupying a private lot is exactly what's...
Okay, okay. Yeah, it just didn't make, you're right. It is exactly the same. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me in either case.
I think the language is set that way for condominium, um, where you're, you don't own the land versus a townhouse where it's side by side and you, and you work.
Okay, that would make sense.
But I'm not an expert. Um, that's just what I...
Yeah, that would make sense. Honestly, I, I don't actually have a problem with this proposed change. I think it makes sense. Um, I don't see what the rationale was to require duplex versus, um, you know, two units, one on the bottom, one on the top. So personally, I don't have a problem with this change.
Now, I, um, if I may, uh, I, I don't really have a problem with the change either, but I would like to see the 1.5 lot area put back in. And, um, I can tell you why nobody builds a one or a two-bedroom house because Title V only allows subsurface disposal systems at a minimum of three bedrooms. So it would be silly to build a three-bedroom septic for a one-bedroom house. Uh, also, I don't really care what the president has to say about Lunenburg because he's certainly not speaking about Lunenburg. We don't have, as far as I'm concerned, a housing crisis here. I think, I will just repeat pretty much what I said last meeting is this population in town has doubled in my lifetime, which is a little short, shy of 50 years. Um, and the houses keep getting smaller and smaller and, and on smaller lots. Um, I don't, um, and, and I'm also going to repeat what I said last meeting is that this really seems to be driven by one person's desire to develop their own lot and they want to change the bylaws to protect everybody in town from their neighbors all doing this. I don't think it's a necessary change. Uh, I, I, and I, I, I'd agreed with the 1.5 lot area for a two-family versus the regular lot area for a single family. I, I'm not, I, I, I don't, I don't think that this needs an adjustment. I think that you just need to choose a different word for a two-family and call it a, uh, that's, what is, um, uh, the accessory dwelling or a duplex or a townhouse. I, I don't think it makes much difference what you call it, but, um, there are ways to achieve what you're trying to achieve without changing our bylaw.
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mackey.
So the, the accessory requirement would be, um, 30%. Uh, the accessory unit can be no larger than 30% of the main unit. So I could not build two, uh, 1,300 square foot units, for example. So if my, you know, I'm just using my own personal experience, but this could be anybody's experience. For a 1,300 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath, um, I would have to build the other main unit at, oh, I, I didn't actually calculate it, but it's about 2,500 square feet. So, uh, that's, that's a lot bigger than, than what I'd be looking to build. Um, it's, it's a lot bigger than what I'd need. So I don't have the flexibility because of this, this bylaw. I've got to build a giant house to build a 1,200, 1,300 square foot accessory unit. And I'm trying to, to do this in a economic, economically friendly way and an eco-friendly way. I'm, I'm not looking to build McMansions. Um, I just think that, that there's a use case for smaller homes for, for young couples and for, uh, older couples, folks without, without large families. Um, they don't have a lot of options in town. I don't see a lot of stock for that other than a big, you know, the 40B complexes that have gone in. Um, you don't want to live in a environment that has that much density. You don't have too many options in town.
Well, I guess my, uh, first question is I would like to see how the board feels about sponsoring an article like this. I mean, we've, we've brought plenty of articles to town meeting in the recent years with limited success. Um, I feel like as a board, we've invested a lot of time vetting those articles and thinking about all the unintended consequences and the kind of snowball effect that, um, is created when you start tweaking certain parts of the bylaw. And before we have too much of a discussion, I think ultimately that's, that's the point that we need to make a decision on. Is this something that as a board, we want to move forward, uh, at town meeting? And I appreciate Mr. Mackey being proactive and coming to us. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we should be promoting this at town meeting, so. Any thoughts?
My, hmm. My thoughts on this get a little complex as I try to, uh, weigh everything together. I, I guess part of what I'm looking at and what, what is the process for a citizen bringing their own, um, bylaw update to town meeting?
It would be, they would need to do a petition. Uh, and for annual town meeting, I think it's only 10 signatures. And for special, I believe it's 100. Uh, so that's how it would get on the warrant. The, the select board can't deny the placement of a properly submitted petition to the warrant. Now, we take that and we superimpose the 40A process for changing of zoning bylaws. And once the petition is properly filed, it would need to be referred to this board for a public hearing. Uh, and this board would need to then present a report back to town meeting. Uh, that report can be as simple as we voted, um, this many to this many for or against. And it could be as complex as, you know, we looked through the bylaw. This is what our feelings are. This is why we voted this way. This is what our concern is. Um, at the hearing, you can, uh, propose alterations that you feel would be appropriate within the context of the bylaw. Unlike your own article, which you could theoretically change at the public hearing, uh, you can only make recommendation on a citizen petition. Only the petitioner can make the alterations.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Adam. So, uh, I, I get where Mr. Mackey is going with this, I think. And though I disagree with some of the pre- premises that lead to it, uh, and I think some of them are just worthwhile of grander discussion, I, I spend more time than a reasonable person, my, discussing with my, my friends who are kind of into this about how do you, how do you balance, um, not affordable housing, but rather housing that is affordable, you're not, you know, capital affordable, capital housing. But how do you balance housing that is affordable with the needs of a town to not expand beyond its tax base? And what impacts that has on being exclusionary in the process and how you can mitigate that. I think there's good questions. And I, I see the use for this. Um, what I'm wondering, and this is really purely a political thought process at this point, is what are we thinking we may be putting forward to town meeting coming up next? And if we're already going to have a few things on the docket, could it be too, I mean, simply could it be too much from the planning board? And would it be more likely, uh, better for what the other big fish we're looking to fry as well as better for Mr. Mackey? For him to put this in as a citizen petition rather than the planning board? And I don't know the answer to that. I'm just putting that out there.
Well, I'm sure we'll have some things coming forward. I mean, from my perspective, our focus really needs to be the capital, uh, the master plan more than anything else. You know, we've had limited success with bylaw updates. But as we go through the master planning process, part of that is the population study. And something that I would like to see the planning board look at is digging into some of those numbers a little bit deeper in terms of how many building permits are we issuing? What's the real growth and what does that look like for us as a town? Um, you know, personally, I, I'm not opposed to growth, but the rate of growth at this point concerns me and it concerns me when it comes to town services. You know, the, the school is a big part of our budget and, uh, nobody's building four-bedroom, uh, nobody's building one and two-bedroom homes. They're building three, four, five-bedroom homes. So that's, that's going to leave the town with a huge responsibility, um, especially when it comes to education. So, Mr. Allison, do you have any thoughts on the planning board presenting?
I do, actually. Um, I, I'm, I'm not for it. I'm not for it, uh, for a couple of reasons, but I do, uh, have another thing about unintended consequences. If I may?
Please do.
I guess it would be a question to Adam. So because, be- because the Scribner's error eliminated the 1.5 lot area, uh, and we move forward, we adjust the definition and we still leave out the 1.5. Does that leave us open to the multitude of existing non-conforming cottages on the lakes that have turned into full-time residences that don't meet any of our qualifications? Can they pretty much turn into two families?
Uh, I would have to look at it more closely because I would probably think that by, so what Section 6 of 40A says is that if you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot and you want to make alterations to a one or two-family dwelling that don't increase the non-conformity, then, uh, you can do so through the building permit process. I don't believe, and, and I, I would have to look a little closer at this, that the conversion of a one-family to a two-family could be looked at as not increasing the non-conformity because you're changing the intensity of the use. So it's not like putting a porch on a dwelling that's on a quarter acre or extending, uh, a, a roofline to add a dormer or even another bedroom. You're creating an entirely different dwelling unit. Uh, but I would have to, I'd have to look a little closer at that. I, I'm not comfortable saying absolutely, uh, they wouldn't be able to do that, but I would lean in that direction.
Well, they can always go up.
They can, they can. But what I'm saying is it, it says existing one and two-family. So I don't know if the alteration from one-family to two-family would be beyond the scope of the protections offered within Section 6.
Right.
What I, I would, is what I would infer, but, um, I, I, I can't say definitively off the top of my head.
But to Mr. Allison's point, if you have a lot with a single-family home on it now and it is conforming, it meets the lot size.
If it was 40,000, yeah, they would all that.
Absolutely do whatever.
As long as they can make the septic work.
Yeah.
That's really the limiting factor.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of the conforming are already on septic, uh, sewer, sorry.
Depends on the lake.
Well, not specifically just lake.
True.
Tanner, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apologize in advance. It's gonna take a little while to transition from being chair. So, so if, if I speak out of turn, just, just, hey, listen, stop it. Knock it off.
No, I, uh, I completely understand. Um, well, I think at this point, um, I don't know if we should take a vote on moving this forward or not. Um, I think that probably makes the most sense and that way, uh, Mr. Mackey has a definitive understanding of where we sit as a board. So I'll entertain a motion on Mr. Mackey's proposed bylaw update regarding two-family dwellings.
I would make a, make a motion to move forward Mr. Mackey's proposed, uh, definition of a two-family dwelling with a provision that the one- with a provision that the one and a half lot area remains the same.
Just for clarification, that would at this point be a change. Because the one and a half times lot area got omitted and it failed at town meeting.
But it's existing in our bylaw. If you look at the current. Okay, I see what you're saying. All right. Yeah, I'm concerned, as it stands, I would want the one and a half lot area, I think, for a two-family versus an accessory housing unit.
Mr. Chair, while you're taking motions, I do see Mr. Mackey has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to address the the concern for the two-family. I mean, those existing houses could by right build an accessory unit today, and I don't see the doors being knocked down to do that today. And then switching to a two-family, you know, this, this one and a half times the zoning requirement hasn't been there for three years. And there's only been a few at town meeting. It was estimated to be three units that were built. So a lot of the fears, uncertainty and doubt over a three-year period doesn't really seem to have panned out. It doesn't mean there couldn't be a firestorm of folks, you know, trying to add stories to their houses, but I don't I don't foresee such a thing, but.
Just as a quick comment along those lines, we've currently got a subdivision in front of us that is working on that exact issue with 12 units. So. Potential is certainly there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
My issue is that, you know, zoning is there for a single family home. Typically, when you're dealing with an accessory structure, you're dealing with an ailing parent or it's a, it's, there's a reason that you're building a smaller unit typically to house another family member. Obviously, that can change and it can become a rental. But when you, but it's a smaller area. And when you're talking about two families, I think that you need that additional lot area, in my opinion. So I think to have requirements for single-family homes and then eliminate them for two fam, you know, keep them the same for two family just doesn't make sense in my mind. So that's why I would not want to see that reduction.
Mrs. Bertram, you raise a good point, I think, as I think it through. As it is right now, if on my one acre lot, if my mother needed to move in with us and wanted her independence and we didn't want to do an accessory unit, is there any reason we couldn't just effectively build a two-family? Like, we could have a full second kitchen and a full separate effectively a full separate unit, but it's not marketable as a two-family. It's not rentable necessarily as a two-family, I believe. But if the concern was taking care of ailing family members, can't we do that now under current bylaws? By just building what you need?
Yeah, as long as you meet code. Dwelling units, you can, you could have three, four, eight kitchens if you really wanted.
Right, but you have to obtain a building permit. The building permit, when you, if you're, if you have an existing home and, for example, you have a bedroom that you're going to add a kitchen to, but you can't just add a bedroom. You can't add another whole structure without, unless you're on town sewer, without addressing your septic system. So septic systems are sized by bedrooms. So if you, unless you're going to add a kitchen in a location that's approximate to an existing bedroom, typically you get into an accessory building permit, and that is the building permit that, on the building permit, it would state that. So, you know, certainly you can have more kitchens, but you would have to go through the zoning officer and the building official for the building permit.
I guess my question is, is that for someone who's trying to build a residence to care for an ailing family member, who wants them to have roughly equal square footage? Assuming this isn't something that's then later going to be rented out, if the purpose of this is to care for a family member. I guess I'm looking at it one, I'm trying to understand, because if you were building a two-family, you would still need to meet the septic needs. If you were building an accessory, you still, like, I know how, I know septic needs are septic needs. I guess I'm just.
I don't think, I personally, and I don't know, we have to check with the zoning officer, but I don't think that you could build a whole separate unit added to your property without the building official determining that it's a, that it's a that would be a question for the zoning officer. You know, some houses have summer kitchens, et cetera, but if you're adding, you know, separate living quarters, I think that the building official would determine that you were building a two-family. And that would be a question for Adam, but.
I mean, I can check with the building commissioner. I believe that if there is no separate dwelling, separate entrances, completely sealed off from one another, it would not be considered a two-family. It would be considered. You know, it's, it's a fine line and it's probably a determination by the building official based on each individual case, but I will, I will get an answer from him.
But essentially, my understanding is that if you need to provide housing for a family member, you do have the ability to do that through the accessory unit. You're just limited to square footage.
Correct, the accessory dwelling unit limits your square footage and you can build a separate structure. Yeah, as long as it meets the parameters.
Yeah. And so yours, whatever your limitations are for septic, they're going to be there whether it's a two-family or an accessory dwelling, as long as the bedroom counts the same. So it's in, from my perspective, it's not as if the bylaw has this large area where we're excluding people's ability to do things with their homes. They certainly have options. One of the unintended consequences of making it easier to do full-fledged two families where all the units are the same size, one over the other. If you do get in a situation where these are renting like apartments, you tend to get more turnover. You know, when the development at Emerald Place was proposed, those were supposed to be single-family townhouses owner occupied. I don't think there's a single owner occupied unit in that development. And the challenge for the town is non-owner occupied units tend to turn over more quickly because those people don't have a vested interest in the community. They don't have a mortgage that's tying them to that piece of real estate. So. But to get us back on track, will we support this update moving forward? So Mr. Mackey knows which way to go with his proposed changes?
I would not without the increase in the lot area.
Nor would I.
Okay. Mr. Brenner?
I think I reluctantly agree with Mrs. Bertram and Mr. Allison. I'm incredibly sensitive to the needs that Mr. Mackey has put forward. And I'm not, honestly, I'm not super happy about saying that I wouldn't want to go forward with this because I think there's some very valid points in there and I don't know what the correct solution is. But I don't see, I think I've heard enough challenges brought up with this that I'm not comfortable.
Okay. And I feel the same way. You know, I look at our bylaws with a tremendous amount of respect. And I think we, overall, we have a good product and I don't see a compelling reason to make this change. But Mr. Mackey, you are certainly welcome to proceed on your own. And if you need any help from us along the way, certainly feel free to reach out. And if you do move forward, we will review it prior to town meeting.
Thank you very much for the time to present and for the discussion and decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for 150 Holman Street. Adam, would you like to do the honor of reading the?
Well, I thought the clerk did that.
Mike Jack can do it.
So I'll read it. I just had to find it too. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 24, 2021, 6:35 PM via Zoom video conference to hear and review stormwater management permit to review a stormwater management permit under chapter 204 Stormwater and Storm Sewers of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for property located at 150 Holman Street, map 39 parcel 002, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner is PSG Realty 225 259 LLC, 133 Leinster Shirley Road, Lunenburg, Mass. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Massachusetts Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. In accordance with the governor's order, we are doing this online.
Excellent. Thank you, Adam. And Mr. Marchetti is here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Would you like to walk us through it, please?
Certainly. So as Adam said, I'm here on behalf of PSG Realty 225 259 LLC. It's approximately 18 acre parcel that we initially started looking at as a subdivision, coming in off of Holman, crossing through to Northfield. After we had the wetlands delineated, it proved to be kind of challenging to be able to fit a roadway, subdivision roadway through and to carve out the lots. It was very cost prohibitive just because of the length of roadway and the amount of lots that we were going to be able to get out of it. So we decided the smarter approach, which actually results in a significant less amount of impact to the resource areas and the buffer zones was to carve the 18 acres up into seven individual A and R lots. These lots all range in size from the minimum 40,000 square feet to about three and a half acres. So out of the 18 plus acres that are out there, we've got these seven lots here that are proposed. Four of the lots we've proposed here to be serviced by a common driveway, will be lots one and two that is being pointed to right now. And that one's coming off of Holman and then one other off of Northfield. You can see here the driveway is split for the first hundred or so feet, at least for both of these. Straddles the lot line, which meets your common drive provisions. Stormwater wise, as a residential development, it's required to meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Race Maximum Estent Practical. And then per your local bylaw, we're required to meet, not only use low-impact development techniques, but also meet the 90% TSS removal, pollutant removal rate, 60% phosphorus removal rate and provide a one-inch water quality volume. And I just do want to note that these, these three provisions exceed the minimum requirements of Mass DEP. But we have designed our lots here to meet those, to meet both the Mass Stormwater Regulations and to meet the local Stormwater Management bylaw in Lunenburg. So how we did that, each one of the lots as proposed, their driveways are being routed to either road-sized vegetated swales. There are peystone diaphragms, which are crush-stoned filter strips about three feet wide, a foot or so deep. Those act as sediment four bays. It's your first chain of defense against sediment that's on the roadways or the driveways. Those, those four bays treat the water, then the water is conveyed through these water quality swales. And then ultimately end up in rain gardens and bioretention on each lot. The bioretention is the mechanism for achieving the phosphorus removal that's required by, per your bylaws. So for lots one and two, the common drive, we have that exact treatment train. We have the peystone diaphragms to swales, vegetated swales, then to rain gardens. And I want to note that each one of these rain gardens has been designed specific to the tributary area and the amount of impervious area falling to them. We have a landscape engineer, a landscape architect on our staff who takes great pains in the detail and specifying plants and the appropriate type of shrubs. Like all bioretention, its success is only dependent on its maintenance. And bioretention is a BNP that does need maintenance. We've submitted all of these seven individual notice of intents to conservation. We were under review last week. Conservation was happy with the design. They were very complimentary of it, but they did continue because they wanted to receive feedback from the planning board and greatest engineering. So lots one and two, again, the three-tier treatment, lot three and four, because we don't have long common driveways, we have peystone diaphragms along the edge of the driveways that discharge directly to again, the bioretention areas. And that is lot, sorry, three, four and five. And then lot six and seven, which is the other common driveway off of Northfield, we have the same train as a peystone diaphragm to vegetated swales to bioretention areas. We are proposing the rooftops as well, being routed to dry wells. So we're significantly exceeding all the one-inch requirement for water quality volume. We're exceeding the recharge requirements. So for individual house lots, they're certainly receiving and achieving a high level of stormwater treatment. We have located these all as close to the roadway as possible. We're actually contemplating right now a modification to lot two. So that's the first common driveway off of Holman. We have an interested party. It's a daughter and father who each want the lot. They want to propose lot two to move the house up closer to the lot line, basically where your cursor is right now. I've done the design. We've modified it. I showed Conservation that plan. It eliminates 3,000-plus square feet of driveway, so it's an overall improvement of a whole stormwater plan. And I know we just received Jeff Wall's comments this afternoon, which I would like to read through if you, if you, if we could. They were very minimal and very easy to address. So that could be, if you don't have any questions for me right now, I could certainly go into that comment letter with you.
Did we receive that comment?
I did forward it out after it came to me. When I opened the computer at home, my Outlook crashed, so I don't know.
Because I did not get it. I specifically looked for it at 5 o'clock.
Okay, then something happened in the sending of it.
It came in at like 3:30 or something.
Yeah, I mean, it came in the very end of the day.
Can you send that out to us?
I can. Open it and I'll send it to you right now.
And I'd like to note as well that we've submitted all seven lots to Board of Health. We've done 28 test pits across these seven lots. All the soils out there have been pretty amenable to infiltration. We had truck rates anywhere from three to, three to 10, three to nine mince branch. Groundwater ranging from two to four feet below grade. So I believe there were, as far as I know, I believe all seven lots have now been approved. So I believe there were, as far as I know, I believe all seven lots have now been approved by the health. There were lot six and seven were the last two outstanding. We were waiting for approval from Jim Greffey. Believe we may have all of those now. So barring any, any additional issues coming up here, I think we'll we'll be able to get conservation approval at the next meeting. And then one thing I did want to note is we've authorized our surveyor to go out and stake out the driveways. So once we do get through planning and conservation, knowing that these are scenic roads, we will, we will have to come back to you only if there are any trees that are going to be required to be cut according to the, you know, locations. I know there's no retaining laws, I don't believe, that we're affecting out there.
And that would just be on the Northfield roadside.
Okay, yeah.
And you wouldn't need it on the Holman Street side.
All right. So I can.
You know, and we've got it pulled up here. So Mr. Marchetti, if you want to go through line item by line item.
Yep. So number one is the application was submitted for a special permit. As Jeff mentioned, the regulations have been revised to require standard permit, not a special permit. So I acknowledge that. A locust map, number two, a locust map needs to be included on the plans. That's a very easy add on. I will put that on the plan set. Number three and four, just request additional topographic contour labels. So we will add more labels to the plan for clarity. Number five, the drainage report needs to document how the required sixty percent total phosphorus removal has been achieved. So the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations state the specific pollutant removal per B M P. And we have specifically selected rain gardens, which receive sixty percent T S S or sixty percent phosphorus removal, rather, in themselves. Water quality swales also receive phosphorus removal, a certain level of phosphorus removal. So I provided documentation showing T S S, but not like a phosphorus percentage. So we'll provide the same sheets showing the phosphorus removal. That's all that is. Number six, G E A reviewed the hydraulic computations, found them to be in order, except as noted. In our, number seven, the post development computations, a time of concentration needs to be calculated for two of the subcatchments. That's a very minor click of a button in our model. So I'll modify that and send it back to Jeff Walsh. Number eight, he's noting that compliance with the Mass D E P standards is reasonable. Number nine, general engineering comments. Earth fill engraving associated with the proposed soil absorption system on lots five and six will prevent stormwater runoff originating on abutting properties from flowing onto lots five and six. Based upon the topography, each lot, at each lot, a valley will be filled in to construct the septic systems. So I believe he's, he's referencing lots. He states five and six. I believe he's talking about six and seven here. That's a a minor change to the plan. We have a retaining wall on lot six. We're going to pull the retaining wall back five feet or so. The natural, right, the property line is basically a low point. It's a valley where stormwater flows. So it's still being maintained as it is, but I will pull back the wall slightly just to give it more room on our property. But again, the stormwater flows to that location right now. We're maintaining the same flow path. We're just making it smaller. So Adam, if you wanted to zoom into the lot off of Northfield Road, where that property line comes down and makes an L. So right to go right. So the septic, yeah, so right there at the septic system. To the right side of the proposed septic system on lot six. Right now, you can see this is a drainage swell, kind of the existing topography channels water in a southward direction. Our septic system where it's located due to high groundwater is a mound. If you zoomed in real close, we leave a few feet between the property line and the retaining wall. We'll pull that retaining wall back another five feet in our property. It's the natural flow path where runoff runs today. We're going to maintain, it's just thick lines. It's hard to see at the scale. We'll maintain the flow path through there for stormwater to get across. So we'll, we'll detail that on our revised plan and send it to Jeff for review. And then number ten, on sheet two, the proposed dry well construction detail needs to include footprint dimensions and the height of material. We'll, we'll add that to the plan. The part of the standard for this situation is we need to meet the standards to the greatest extent practicable. The dry well is taking rooftop. Rooftop is clean water. Depth of groundwater is a limiting factor on some of these lots. So we're just basically giving, we're constructing and installing a dry well that will function to its greatest extent practical. Anytime a dry well is inundated in full, there's an overflow at grade. So your gutter is discharged to grade. So you can't always provide several feet of several feet of offset from high groundwater to your storage chamber. But we're giving it the best we can because of groundwater conditions out there. There's a reason why most of our septic systems out here are infill, they're raised. It's because groundwater is only two to four feet below grade. So for the septic situation, we need to maintain the four feet of separation. So we had to raise them up out of the ground. You know, it's similar situation. You know, we're not going to bring in and expand the limit of impact to the buffer zones as such because of grading for a dry well. We'll, we'll provide the volume. It'll still work. It'll still provide the volume that exceeds what's required. But it just won't meet the, the specific definition of maintaining so many feet to groundwater. And then the final comment, number eleven, the plans are plotted at a scale of one inch equals sixty, which is difficult to read. It would be helpful if the plans were plotted at one inch equals forty instead. We can do that. We just put it on one sheet as a stormwater plan. So you could see the overall development on one sheet. If, if it clarity is, is better for the board, we could certainly make it a couple of sheets, two, three sheets more if needed. So as you can see, the comments were all very minimal. Most of them weren't technical. They're just general comments in nature for clarity. I'll go through, I'll respond to these and I'll get Jeff Walsh and I'll revise set of plans as soon as possible. His review.
Okay. I'd just like to thank the applicant for providing a well thought out plan. I know there's several projects that are similar to this in nature that didn't even go through the stormwater process. So thank you for respecting the process and doing the extra work and bringing it to us for our review.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bertram.
Several of the, I, I first, I want to applaud some of the, the things you've incorporated into the sign. I'm, I'm happy to see swales. I'm happy to see dry wells and rain gardens. But one of my concerns is that in order for these to work efficiently, they require a great deal of, of maintenance. And, and it states that on the plan. These are seven individual homes. And my question is, how are they going to be maintained? And how are we going to ensure that they're maintained?
So this was a big hot topic of discussion with conservation last week. Conservation Commission, every one of these lots has an impact to buffer zone. So a notice of intent has to be filed per lot and an order of conditions has to be filed per lot. Order of conditions are recorded at the registry. They're a legal document. The commission is making, adding conditions to these in perpetuity. So there's an operation and maintenance plan that has to be filed and submitted back to conservation on a yearly basis. So that will be written indeed.
Okay. Uh, that's, that's one of my big concerns. And additionally, you mentioned the sediment for bay. And if you don't, the only way that that's going to work efficiently is frequent maintenance is essential. So one of the things that's talked about in the stormwater handbook is sediment depth markers. And since these are going to be specifically owned by homeowners that are going to have to file these plans, are sediment depth markers planned on in this design?
They are not, and I'll, and I'll explain why. This is a sediment for bay in a detention basin. They're designed for a, a large impervious area. They receive a lot of stormwater flow and sediment from salting and sanding operations. There are no sediment for bays specified here. We have peystone diaphragms. Adam, if you, if you could go to page two, we have a detail, but I, I can just show you what it is. So scroll down if you can. So that detail on the bottom, it's a peystone diaphragm detail. It's a stone trench. So a couple of feet wide, a foot and a half or so deep. There's a layer of, yeah, right there. So there's a piece of filter fabric that lays in this trench. So it, it functions the same way as a sediment for bay. You have the top six inches of stone has a layer between it. So you can just replace that top six inches of stone. You peel the filter fabric back, which prevents all the sediment from choking the whole stone volume beneath it. That's where your reservoir is for, for storing water, infiltrating water. And all your dirty water, your salt, your sediment is collected in that upper stone layer. So this functions as a sediment for bay. So in the operation and maintenance plan, it, it details that when it's maintained, how often it needs to be. So you're not going to have, like in a ag grade detention basin, you're not going to be able to see you have you know, three inches of sediment filled up. In a case like this, you'll see the stone, eventually the stone is going to become choked and look like, you know, a beach. It's going to be full of sand or whatever. And this is on a different level too. This isn't a parking lot. This is somebody's driveway. It's probably going to take a lot of years before it would ever see that much sediment, but it's maintained the same way as a sediment for bay.
You know, I, I'm very familiar with, with this type of design because we have several of them around the lake and, and we're, we're actually now doing cleaning them manually and shocked at how much sediment accumulates in a year's time. So that's one of my biggest concerns. Additionally, I mean, if you don't maintain, if the main rain garden goes unchecked and/or is eliminated, if the, if, if this peystone diaphragm isn't cleaned appropriately, and I think I may be wrong, but I thought it said every six months or checked every six months.
Or they have to be inspected. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and my question is, who's going to inspect them? I mean, if, if you've got a homeowner inspecting them, how are they going to know what to look for? How are they going to know when it needs to be cleaned? I mean, is there going to be some sort of documentation that is given to homeowners, letting them know what their responsibilities are and what they need to do?
So the drainage, the drainage report includes an operation maintenance plan. There is a inspection sheet that goes along with it where the homeowner signs it, dates it. And this is the, this is the form that conservation said they're going to request as part of their order of conditions. This is what they're going to request from homeowners on a yearly basis. So it's kind of hard. Yeah, you, you, it's all about enforcement. You know, unfortunately, how do you enforce it? That's up to you. That's up to the town to put in their decision what needs to be done. You know, homeowner, this is, this is, a lot of this stuff is new. I mean, homeowners don't ever really expect to move into a brand new house and then you know, have reporting, yearly reporting requirements. That's something typically that you see for industry and commercial and things like that. But you know, the, the whole world is going this way. You're not the only town. West Michigan's doing the same thing now. A lot of towns are requiring this in perpetuity. So it's new and I think it's new to the town. It's something that the, it's going to be a learning experience. The board and the Conservation Commissioner kind of learning how to handle this now. And the conversations are happening at the conservation level right now.
All right. In your, in the information that I received, you talked about a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And Adam, I didn't see that in the information that was sent to us.
No, that, that's per, per the EPA's construction general permit that's required to be submitted before the start of construction. So it hasn't been created yet, but it, but before construction starts, that's on the developer.
Okay. And who does it get submitted to?
EPA.
Okay.
It gets filed online with EPA. Everybody thinks that, you know, once you file something with EPA, you never hear about it, but we, we had EPA in Lunenburg this past winter and there were projects that I was involved with, they came inspecting. So they're, they're out there.
And if the board wants, you can require a submission of that too, as of your, your approval. You can condition that they submit a, a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan as submitted to EPA.
I would, I would like to do that. I would like to, to obtain a copy of that.
Yeah, conservation requests that as well.
Yeah. I'm, I'm specifically concerned about you talk about the vernal pool in area four. And I'm just wondering, you talk about the total T S S removal for the entire site. But what is the T S S removal prior to entering that vernal pool?
So it's not for the entire site. Every single one of these lots exceeds the ninety percent T S S.
Every single lot. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought it was overall. Okay. Okay. All right. So that's real. I had the question about Jeff's review, but we just saw that. And the dry wells, are those in the single stormwater handbook? Because I couldn't find them.
They are, they are.
Would you mind sending me that excerpt or sending Adam that excerpt?
If you go to, it's a volume two, chapter two, page eighty five.
Volume two, chapter two, page eighty five. All right. Great. Thank you.
If you, I don't know if you can see me, but my, I got the handbook right here. This is the detail which shows.
You know, how did you get the whole, you must have printed the whole thing because it's online. I'm constantly going online and trying to find what I need. So.
Yeah. So there's several types of different dry wells. You can, you can do the D E P one that's detailed is, is a, a hole in the ground. They line it with filter fabric, fill it with crushed stone, and they put their gutter into it. You know, the storm tech infiltration chambers, the big underground systems. People put two or three chambers in the ground. It's the same, same thing. It's basically providing a void below grade where the water is going to go in.
Where the water is going to go in there. Right, right. All right. That's all that I had. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Allison or Mr. Brown?
Yes. So I, I, my, my questions are procedural and I think they're probably towards that to, to Adam. So this is currently a single parcel, right?
Correct.
There's been no A and R submitted.
There has not.
So the, we've already been told that it wasn't feasible to do a subdivision, but it seems like they're using the stormwater process to do a subdivision.
Well, we, we have, we do have an A and R plan. We're waiting to file till you know, we made sure there weren't any issues, overall issues with anybody else. We're ready to go.
Okay. Well, it procedurally, I don't think this is, I think, so how many stormwater special permits have we done since you've been here, Adam? What, four or five maybe?
Probably a few more than that.
Okay. So the first one was over on, what, New West Townsend Road? And there was an A and R on that.
Correct.
We did one on reservoir for PSG and there was an A and R on that.
We did two on reservoir.
And there were A and Rs on both of those.
Correct.
Now, none of them came to us and said that, well, we, we wanted to do a subdivision, but we can't. So we're going to bring this A and R to you and, and vet it out. I, I just, I don't think that this is the appropriate way to have approached this. Honestly. If they want to do a subdivision, I don't see why they couldn't do a subdivision with two roads off of two separate public roads.
Yeah, but that, that's the initial due diligence part of our looking at the lot for which way we as a, as a, you know, the applicant wants to proceed. He comes to us as engineers to review how to subdivide the land. And we decided an A and R subdivision. It's not a subdivision. It's, it's an A and R route was the way to go.
Well, I, I'm not, don't disagree with you. But through the process of your stormwater permit, your, your lot lines can possibly change. Actually fairly likely that they'll change. And you're telling us now in the stormwater permit that you have over ninety percent T S S on every individual lot, but those lots aren't set in stone. So the lot line changes. And it's been said that everyone meets over ninety percent, but once the lot lines change, it might not be the case.
But, but we're at the point now where we've designed it. We've laid it out. The septic systems are what may make us change lot lines. We know they're approved. We're ready. They're good to go. So these, these lot lines, from what you're seeing in your plan, are not changing an inch.
I think procedurally, the board isn't going to approve this this evening. And where they're showing individual lots without the, the endorsement of an A and R, I don't see that you could approve the stormwater permit. Because it, those lots don't, don't exist yet.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear that we don't approve the stormwater permit until we have an A and R in here, right?
And I mean, I, I there's, and, and there's enough things within Jeff's letter that need clarification that you, I I'm going to infer that the board would like to. I'm going to infer that the board would like to see proof that those have been resolved prior to any approval. Uh, and I know when, when Brian did file this, I said, we also need the A and R. Yeah, I know, but, you know, we have advertising on this and we have the A and R ready to go. Um, I was surprised to not see it last week, but I guess it makes sense if he was waiting for, uh, Board of Health approvals on, on septic systems.
Okay, okay, and I don't mind being the jerk. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that's the process. We're going to have an A and R in hand before we make any kind of an, uh, insinuation of approving a stormwater permit.
Okay, you'll have it next week?
Is, I mean, that's, that's, that's procedurally the correct way, is it not?
I would infer that that would be correct. You wouldn't make an approval without the lots being created.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate where the applicant's coming from on this one because we've had other situations where we've done the A and R and then they get to Board of Health and Board of Health says, well, you need a grading change here or an easement there. And then they're back in front of us redoing an A and R because they had to move a lot line. Um, so, you know, I, I respect both sides, but I appreciate flushing out all the issues and we'll just get it all organized and, um, make sure we get the A and R done before we
Okay.
stamp the stormwater. Mr. Brenner, any questions?
Uh, the questions I had were mainly around the maintenance of the, uh, stormwater facilities that Mrs. Bertram much more eloquently and knowledgeably asked about.
Okay. Uh, seeing as how this is a public hearing, do we have any members of the public that have any questions or comments?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do have one question for Mr. Marchetti. Where are you in the conservation commission process?
Uh, so at the last hearing, um, the, so last week, where, where everything's been filed, they have the latest and greatest of everything and they're just waiting to hear, they wanted to, they asked if there was anybody technical reviewing this. And I told them the planning board has a technical review consultant. And they said they were interested in hearing about their feedback before they voted on it. Which, you know, it's, it's not required for conservation, so I didn't agree with that. But I knew I still had to go through planning with you guys, so I didn't push the, push the, you know, argue the point.
So, so the question.
My, 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 I don't see any reason why this project would not be approved at the next conservation hearing, which I believe is the, uh, first or second weekend, Joe.
So for, for the planning director, you mentioned that we can stipulate that we want a copy of the stormwater pollution plan. Um, but I would also like to have copies of the maintenance reports similar to what conservation is doing. And I'm questioning.
That's fine, that, that's a, yeah.
Okay.
You're, you're approving the stormwater system, there's no reason you can't require that.
And that was submitted in the drainage report that I did provide to the planning board.
I, I think she's talking about the annual.
I'm talking about the, the, the periodic maintenance that's required. I want to get a, I want the planning board to receive copies of those reports.
Oh, I get you, okay, yep.
So, uh, through the chair, I have more questions on that as well.
Go ahead.
The, um, so we, we have a, a difficult time. And we, I mean, the, the town, uh, enforcing the condo associations and homeowners associations and, and really en- enforcing what we should be doing on our own cleanup and maintenance of our own owned infrastructure. What, what legal enforcement do we have over a single family home? Single family homes are exempt from a lot of stuff. So it's all well and good that we're told that all these maintenance plans are here. But I live across the street from a 20-year-old development, was a special permit cluster development. And then most of those people have moved in since, most of those people are the second or more ho- own, owners of those homes. And almost every stipulation of that special permit for the cluster development has been violated. And there's constant inquiries and, and, and suggestions that, that the stipulations 20 years ago of that special permit be ignored because they want pools and they want fences and they want gardens. So, I mean, my question is, how enforceable are any of these stipulations on a single family home?
I believe that specifically, I think Conservation Commission probably has the heavier hand in that under the, um, Wetlands Protection Bylaw, if they are required to submit regular annual reports to the Conservation Commission and they don't, they can, Conservation can then seek an enforcement order against the homeowner. Um, and an enforcement order can include daily fines. Um, I don't know what the enforcement is under from a planning board perspective, but I couldn't agree with you more that we are not following and not keeping track of the maintenance reports, et cetera, that need to happen. And I think that that's a big part of our problem. I think that we are, we are seeing higher phosphorus and nitrates in lakes, in both Lake Shirley and Hickory Hills. I don't have any idea about Lake Whalen because I'm not involved with those. But I certainly know that stormwater is causing issues and we need to be better about this. We need to start enforcing and ensuring that maintenance is, is followed. Because without the maintenance of these structures, you might as well not have done them. Um, stormwater is the leading cause of pollution in the state of Massachusetts. Um, actually, in, in, across the country, stormwater is a huge problem. And that's why when Mr. Marchetti talked about, you know, this is, EPA is coming out and more and more enforcement is being done because it i- it is an enormous problem. If you look at the MS4 regulations, that's why they were enacted. Um, so we have to get better about it. To simply say, you know, how do we do, the, the question of how do we do it is important. But, and I think we need to answer that, but the fact is, we have to do it. If, if we are allowing subdivisions to build huge detention ponds that require periodic maintenance and mowing and cleaning, and we're not following up to make sure that happens, then shame on us. Because that's what we, as, as the body that permitted it, need to do.
We're not.
I know that, and that's an enormous problem.
Yeah, and I think part of the challenge with, uh, these requirements are that 20 years ago, there wasn't a deed restriction, there wasn't anything put on file, and so it's less enforceable. All you have is the planning board approval, which may or may not have included all of the details. Um, I certainly shared Mr. Allison and Mrs. Bertram's concerns about stormwater and, um, you know, having the appropriate maintenance done to make sure that these systems work. But I think step one is the applicant presenting a plan that meets today's standards. And I know for a fact, there is a lot of single family homes being constructed without any of these facilities. So from my perspective, this is certainly a step in a positive direction. Um, and hopefully by educating the homeowner and, you know, the, um, notice of intent and order of conditions through conservation, um, you get some positive response from people maintaining these systems. Um, I know for a fact, as a landscape contractor, 10 or 15 years ago, I hardly worked on a property with conservation orders of conditions in place. Now it seems most of the new homes, oh, there's rocks in the backyard that delineates a no-touch zone. Uh, we can't mow past this point. I mean, those are all realities for homeowners now, uh, as they develop lots that, uh, in some situations are closer to wetlands. Um, so hopefully we can, as a community, move forward and do the right thing and educate people and help mitigate some of the damage being done by stormwater, so.
And as much as, as much as the, the handbook has required O and M plans, they were not universally put into any stormwater thought or, or submission probably until like six or seven years ago. I mean, you, you can go back to, uh, you know, housing boom of, of oh, five, oh, six in there. And, I mean, people were just throwing stuff up and they were like, yeah, here my stormwater meets it. And there wasn't a thought of what happens next.
When we issue a stormwater permit, since we are the permitting authority for stormwater, I think we need to start requiring that the maintenance reports be sent to us. And I think we need to start tracking that.
And I think that's in the, the, the new bylaw.
So, you know, I, I would, I would, I think the onus is on the office to start tracking these developments, tracking what maintenance needs to occur, what that schedule is, and ensuring that we receive it. And, and I know for a fact that many conservation commissions are doing this just because they're using software that I wrote, um, to track those reports. So we need to start doing that. Um, you know, when, as Mr. Allison says, when we approve a development that, you know, says they're going to, they have this entire elaborate operation and maintenance plan, well, we never follow up to make sure they're following it. And we need to do that. We need to require that they submit the reports and, and that they meet their deadlines.
Any other comments from the board? And I don't see anybody from the public with their hand up. Uh, so with that, I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing. Um, what makes sense, Mr. Marchetti, date-wise?
Um, I will, I will file that A and R plan, um, if not by the end of this week, beginning of next week. Uh, conservation, um, I don't have their, uh, I don't have their schedule. I don't remember what it was, but I think it's the first week or second week in, uh, June.
You made the, do they make the second, fourth or the first and third? I thought it was the first and third.
I think it is the first and third.
Their first and third, their next meeting is June 2nd.
I was going to say, so they'd be two and 16 and we'd be 14 and 20.
Yeah, so, I mean, both, one of the, one of the points I argued with them, I said, is, you know, they, they got to get approved at some point, whether they're conditional on each other. You know, and that's what I asked for, just a conditional approval that, um, you know, conservation approvals conditional on plant board issuing this law monitor, you know, and vice versa. I, I, I think we're, we could.
Oh, their approval should be separate from what we're doing here. I mean, I can respect the fact that they wanted to see Graves' review. Um, but at the end of the day, I would say, why don't we go for June 14th, which is our next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Before you put me on the next available agenda.
What I will say is you would need to have stuff to us by the eighth.
Okay.
And if you want Jeff to have final review, you're probably going to want to try and get that to him sooner rather than later.
Yes.
I know he's buried, he owes us two or three reviews still. Uh, and I know he's in a couple of other towns, he said it all kind of crashed at once.
Yeah, we're, we're unfortunately all in the same boat.
I'm sure.
Never seen, never seen it like this before.
So I would, I would make a motion to continue the hearing for 150 Holman Street to June 14th at 6:35 PM.
I would second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of continuing by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a, uh, very quick question?
Certainly.
Uh, I am here, uh, so I, I only have hearing in one ear, I've lost a good deal of hearing. Um, and I am hearing dogs and I'm trying to figure out if they're coming through the speaker or if I need to go check on my chickens.
They're, no, they're in the background of my house.
Great, thank you, so I.
Oh, at least mine should be in the background. I don't know about anybody else's.
That I, thank you ver- I have a horrible time hearing, uh, direction now. And so I just couldn't figure out if, uh, I, I should have someone go make sure I don't have a flock getting destroyed.
I, I probably have turkeys walking around in my backyard and the dogs are excited.
Well, thank you.
Next item, minutes approval for May 10th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yep. I would make a motion to approve the May 10th, 2021 minutes.
I would second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for May 10th, 2021 by roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Excellent. Committee reports.
Uh, we have three other sets of minutes, don't we?
Oh, okay, um, I'm sorry, I thought we were taking them collectively.
Well, I'd be happy to take them collectively. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:10, 21 for 711 Massachusetts Avenue, for 101 Pleasant Street and for 757 Chase Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. All right, now on to committee reports, Stormwater Task Force.
I'm not sure, I think we're still trying to figure out the next meeting date. I don't think I've gotten a hard one yet from Adam. And he's muted.
Uh, we don't have a hard date yet, probably after June 15th.
Okay, and it's going to go to Paula now, not me.
Yes.
Okay, um, so yes, there's no report for stormwater.
Okay, AgCon, and I just noticed we didn't appoint anybody for AgCon, did we?
It's, it's technically something that I kind of weaseled in a few years back.
Okay.
It's not really a, a, a formal charge. Um, I thought it was nice, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm the chairman there. Uh, well, actually, we're going to have to reorganize at our next meeting, so I may not be. Um, but I am an appointed member of the AgCon, so.
Appointed by the selectmen or by the, by the selectmen, right?
Yeah, uh, to the AgCon and I'm appointed by the members to be the chair.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it, it only made sense. Um, we, we can leave it on there, we can take it off, uh.
I, I like to hear it.
Hmm.
Okay. It's up to the mute.
No, I, you know, certainly like to hear from AgCon, so.
Okay, beautiful.
In place.
We met last Thursday. Um, I finally, uh, got off my butt and sent a letter, uh, regarding the, well, a letter that the AgCon approved last year to be sent out to, uh, affected parties, which are the select board, the building official and, um, animal control, I believe. I'm not sure. Anyways, it's about farm complaints. Um, we do have a, uh, a, a farm, we have a right to farm bylaw and, and I believe it's included in the farm section of the town code, I think it's 143. Um, and anyways, in that, in that bylaw that has been since 2014, it's, it's very clear about, uh, complaints, farm complaints, ag-related complaints. Um, they should be forwarded, if, if they're made to the, the building department or the select board or the animal control, they are to be, oh, Board of Health, I'm sorry, not animal control, Board of Health. They're to be forwarded to the Agricultural Commission. Um, the Agricultural Commission has heard numerous in, in its last six, eight years, um, have hit, we've, uh, mediated, uh, complaints and unhappy neighbors. Um, and so anyways, we sent that letter out. Uh, have not heard much back, um, but I hope that it's going to be a conversation starter. Um, and we are working on a flyer to promote the Agricultural Commission. Uh, we have a local graphic artist that's helping us with it. And they're also going to include the farm list. Hopefully, we're going to get that, uh, pretty well updated. And, uh, the last thing is our farmer's market is ready to start on 13th of next month, the second Sunday. Uh, as far as I know, we have 15 confirmed vendors as of last Thursday. So that's it.
Excellent, thank you. Just to clarify on the animal. Just to clarify on the animal complaints, so what you're saying is AgCon has jurisdiction over that? In other words, the other boards shouldn't be involved?
Not that they shouldn't be involved, because there are, there are thresholds. The, the reason, i- if you, if you'll indulge me.
Certainly.
The, the reason the right to farm bylaw became a thing is because, uh, before we had it, if there was an animal complaint, or a farm complaint, or any kind of a complaint from a neighbor, it typically went to the state, and the state, they would just issue a cease and desist order on a farm. So what does that do? Pretty much shuts them down. So, a- and, and, and they have the right, they have the right to do what they're doing in the state constitution. So what it did was it brought it back to local, and it allows for the Agricultural Commission to mediate complaints. And basically, the right to farm in the state constitution says that allow, uh, standard, standard agricultural practices are allowed, that anybody with animals and equipment and land and, and stinky furry things that poop everywhere are allowed to do that, as long as it's consistent with what they've always done. If they always poop there, then, and the neighbor moves in and doesn't like them pooping, well, that's too bad. Basically, and, and that's, that's basically the mediation process. Um, it's usually, it's usually a newcomer to town, moved in next to a farm, thought it was beautiful until he started to smell it, until they started to spray the fields and, and spread it, and, oh, they have babies and they make a lot of noise, oh, I don't like this farm anymore, I'm gonna complain. Not gonna get them very far.
Yep.
All right, so that's, that's, that's that.
Manure spreading in January is much different than manure in July, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah. Not to the guy, not to the guy in the tractor, though.
T C P B D C.
We are meeting, I believe, on the twenty-sixth, which is this Wednesday, I think. Yes, so, no report.
Open space.
Uh, the open space committee met on May eighteenth, and there's actually something that I need to bring forward to this board. We had a presentation by two residents, Dave Prokabue and Eric Hines, relative to two parcels, six seventy-one West Street and two twenty-five Pleasant Street. And I would encourage members to take a look at the recording of the open space meeting, they did an excellent presentation, um, regarding these two parcels. The West Street parcel is forty acres of wetland, woodland, and contains a pond, and the forty acres of the Pleasant Street parcel are open fields and were once farmland. And they are looking for the town to, they're currently listed as general municipal, and they are looking for the town to designate them as conservation and/or recreation. So they presented the part, the, um, presentation, um, so each designate that represents various departments, so for example, myself, uh, the Park Department, the, um, trying to remember what they all are now, Parks Planning Board, I honestly don't remember.
Conservation.
Conservation, um, is for each of us to bring back to our, um, committees that they would, the open space actually endorses this idea, um, but wanted to bring it back to each individual committee. We do think there's an opportunity potentially for recreational space, one of the things in our open space plan talks about additional fields and recreational space, and the Pleasant Street parcel would be ideal for that. The six seventy-one West Street parcel has a, a, a pretty extensive trail system throughout that property, and the presentation includes those trail loops. And so it, it makes sense, but what we'd like to do is start reaching out to various town committees, uh, cemetery, parks, conservation, um, conservation schools, um, and ensuring that there's no missed potential use of this property. But ideally, we believe it would, it would be suitable for parks and rec and for conservation. Took that one before I can keep going?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what is it, is it a hay field, does it get hayed?
Um, currently, two twenty-five Pleasant Street does get hayed, a portion of the property, there's a portion of the property that is being hayed. Not quite sure who was haying, and I know that Steve Devatin Court hated it for a number of years, but he is no longer haying it, so I'm not sure who's doing it.
I think John Dupree's haying it currently.
Okay, okay.
And I had a question along those lines is, I, it's my understanding that AgCon can hold and take custody and, of land just like conservation now, and I would look at a parcel like that and say, that or the Woodruff parcel, and say, why aren't these in the care of AgCon and?
And I should have included them, AgCon is definitely one of the people that we wanna reach out to, committees we wanna reach out to as well.
Yeah, and, and not to say that it, it's better ag land than recreational land, but you look at the Saliba property, which a portion of that was designated to be recreational, that's certainly not ag land. Whatever work you're gonna need to do, you're gonna need to do to either parcel to make it recreational space, I mean, you can take a hay field and turn it into a soccer field, especially that one, it's awfully wet. I, I know more than one farmer has pulled his equipment out of that place.
Really?
Over the years, so.
So what we'd like to do is start the process of reaching out to everybody and get everybody a seat, seat at the table, to look at these parcels, to look at what makes sense. Um, and the impetus for this is, is really these residents coming forward, um, they have a strong desire to protect this land, um, and obviously, as an open space committee, that's something that we're looking for as well, i- inland that makes sense. So, you know, agricultural committee definitely has a seat at the table, and actually, that's in my notes, and I, um, and it actually says Pleasant Street is mostly agricultural, um, for a portion of it, and then there's a, there's also a, um, area that is wooded on that parcel, cause it is forty acres, so, so there's a multitude of, of potential uses there. Um, so potentially even, you know, segregating the parcels and de- designating them separately, um, might make sense, but leaving it as general municipal, um, without any sort of protection just doesn't, the open space committee would like to see those uses clarified and protected. Um, an agricultural use would be protected, a conservation commission would be protected, um, so we would like to see those protections put into place.
All right.
So, the plan is, and I don't know if he's reached out to you yet, Adam, but Brandon Kibbie is gonna reach out to you and to Heather Lemieux, uh, general municipal land is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, um, so obviously, we need to start there with that conversation, but we would like to start reaching out to the various boards and commissions to have this discussion.
So, is, is the planning board hoping to have a discussion about this? Are you looking for, is, is Brandon going to approach the other boards, is he looking for us to do that, what?
Um, he is looking to do that, he will be writing the letter, but first, because it's currently under the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen, um, he didn't, you know, we wanted to go to our prospective bodies, and then in our next meeting, which will be in June, is to bring back any feedback from our prospective bodies, so I certainly will bring back the fact that we need to include agricultural and the fact that parts of the field are wet. Is there anything else you would like me to bring back?
I, if I recall, six seventy-one was originally purchased as school land.
It was, and then it was turned.
Ultimately discounted because of, of the location and the wetness and the access and.
Right, and it was turned back over to the town.
And I believe that there is a standing, um, town meeting vote that allows the Select Board to sell small portions of it to abutting property owners?
There is, and that did occur, I was actually on the board at, at the time that that occurred, and those sales did happen to some of the properties, they acquired a piece of the backland.
And I know someone had recently inquired about it, and I think that, that it, it's still a valid vote, so I don't know if there's an additional layer that needs to be.
There was actually a plan done, there was actually.
Okay.
Done, uh, at that time of what parcels would be for sale, um, and it was a very small portion of the forty acre parcel.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was five thousand here, five ten thousand.
Yeah, so it doesn't go beyond the entire, you know, it basically, it squared off those lots.
Yeah, it's a, it's a perimeter.
Yeah. Um, so is it, other than the agricultural component, bringing to the attention that areas of those, those meadows are wet, and actually, the, in the presentation, the, the residents called it a wet meadow, portions of it a wet meadow, um, is there anything else you guys would like me to bring back? Okay. All right, whoops, go ahead.
There is something, but I, I think it's more appropriate for the pub, for the board comment at the end of the meeting, so hopefully I'll remember.
Okay. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanted to talk about is, there's a potential revision conservation, the conservation member Bob Pease brought this to the committee's attention, is that there is, where the Conservation Commission is looking at a revision of the land use plan for, um, the lane and table rock. Bow hunting is currently allowed in Lunenburg on conservation land, but somehow, when those parcels were acquired, warding was put in, the bow hunting was, um, only allowed by special permit by the Board of Selectmen, um, so they are looking to revise that language, um, which is different than any other Conservation Commission parcel. And we are continuing to look at, um, general municipal land, um, and we do have a focus on land around Lake Shirley, because there is land around Lake Shirley that may make sense to sell, but there's also potential land around Lake Shirley that would allow public access, so we're, we're looking at that, and as we flush through that, we will bring it back to our respective boards.
I have a question about Lake Shirley.
Yeah.
So, in the past, uh, my understanding is that the ownership of the lake is questionable.
I actually, I actually, and I'll set, send it out to Adam, so he can send it to everyone. I was on the board then, we never did a, a full title search, but we did have Copan, Copan and Page take a look at it, and there, it's clear that the town has some interest in the fee, but it's not clear what percentage and who else has free interest in the lake. It's a, it's a very long document that outlines the history of the lake, um, it was a cordage company that, that owned much of the, of the property around the lake, so I'll forward that to Adam and send it out to everybody.
So, that's probably why it's the Lake Shirley Improvement Corporation versus the Hickory Hills Land Owners Association.
Right, right.
So, as far as this shows, it's, it's town of Lunenburg and unknown.
Right, right, so I, I'll send that out, but, but one thing that happened is when the dam, when the dam was accepted by the town, and that's detailed in the, in this title report, when the dam was accepted by the town, it was funded through state money with the stipulation that public access be allowed to Lake Shirley. So the dam and some of the land associated with the dam was gifted to the town by town meeting vote, and subsequent to that, the funds were, were acquired through the state to, to repair the dam, um, again, with the stipulation that public access be granted. The public access parcel that was granted was affectionately known as Stump Cove, and if anyone knows that, it's full of stumps. So, so we are looking for meaningful access, um, potentially to the lake for residents, which was in keeping with the original town meeting vote and with the grant by the state.
So it looked like there's a lot of screwy things, cause the dam looks like it's more in Shirley than it is in Lunenburg, and, and I was gonna mention the Stump Cove is the public access, so if you wanna wade through mud up to your hips, you can put your kayak in, but certainly nothing else.
Exactly.
Or you can pay Shady Point, or, or what, nothing.
Right, right. Right, so, so there's actually, uh, there's six potential parcels around the lake that potentially combined would make sense, and it was very interesting, we talked to, and I don't have my notes with me, but we talked to, um, there's a division of the state under conservation and recreation that is access to lakes and ponds, and I actually spoke with, I wanna say Doug Cameron, I think that's his name, but don't quote me on that, um, and the state is very interested in getting public access to water bodies, and they actually have programs that they would completely fund all of the improvements necessary to make that happen, at no cost to the town. The stipulation would be that it remains for public access in perpetuity, and apparently, he has been looking at Lake Shirley for a very long time, and he would be extremely interested in working with the town to make that happen. So they would do parking, they would do plans, they would do design, they would do everything associated with making it accessible for pub, for public access.
Nice, so, yeah, we could make a, we could make a Whalen Lakefront on Reservoir Road.
Well, not really, because you have to own the land, the town has to own the land, so there's only certain parcels that are currently under town ownership, um, and the key for, you'd, there has to be a clear title for town, and there's, and that's the, that's the issue, is we're in the process of going through deeds and then researching abutting deeds, because there's an entire process for the tax title and taking process that has to happen, and there's a foreclosure process, and, and that hasn't occurred, so when it says owner's unknown, unless we've gone through the entire taking process and the foreclosure process, it really isn't the town's. So there are some parcels that have gone through that process, but there are others that have not, so that's what we're in the process of looking at.
Well, it looked like, it looked like Lake Shirley Reservoir goes right up to the right of way on Reservoir Road, so, again, we could have a lakefront on Lake Shirley.
Um, well, I, I mean, they're gonna be interested in areas that can, that can house parking, that have adequate parking, that have, um, you know, they could do a canoe portage, the potentially a boat ramp, um, you know, they would, they would want to, once we, once we identify where we wanna look at, and I can tell you the parcels we're specifically looking at, if you wanna give me just one second.
But clearly, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, as.
There is. Right, and we're in the process of doing that, there, there are, there are two parcels identified as zero Lake Shirley, one is in the area of, um, Flynn Road, and one is in the area of Reservoir Road, there is eight sixty, uh, eight sixty Reservoir, seven twenty-five Goodrich Street, and zero Shirley Reservoir Road that are of real interest to, to us, those are three parcels that basically abut, and then the street dissects one of them, but that is a, a potential area. We've also looked at fifty-one Parmenta Road, but that has a steep slope, um, and limited accessibility, and then there's two properties known as zero Flynn Road, and another one known as zero Shirley Reservoir Road, that are, that are contiguous or, or very close to contiguous, that would be accessible via Flynn Road, and those are really the, the primaries we're looking at. Actually, that's my, that's, actually, that's my task, so that's the primaries I'm looking at.
Capital planning.
It's done for the year, I think.
Yeah, and not much to report until, uh, budget season rolls around, right? Uh, economic development.
We are meeting in June, Adam, what's the date of that?
June third.
June third, thank you.
M R P C.
Next meeting is scheduled for June third, we have not met since our last meeting.
And M J T C.
Uh, that meeting was on May twelfth, and there's a couple pieces of info that may be of interest to the public, um, one of which is, uh, the one thing that was brought up that, uh, some members of the public may be just interested in, is that beginning in June, Mart is going to have on its website, um, automated passenger counts, uh, well, they'll have automated passenger counts and stop. automated passenger counts, uh, well, they'll have automated passenger counts and stop announcements for the buses. And they'll have bus tracking on their website. So Mart, Mart is kind of coming up, uh, impressively into the twenty-first century.
There you go.
Um, but that means you're not gonna sit there wondering, is your bus coming? You will be able to go online and see. The other thing is, um, for the capital investment plan, which is, uh, again, for the members of the public that might watch this meeting, um, it, it's a way of kind of allocating state and federal funds to pay for long-term improvements to the transportation system. And there is a, a set of virtual public meetings to give comment and to, and to find out more about the plan. The one for central, uh, for Central Mass and Monticuce that would apply to us is this Thursday, the twenty-seventh at six P M. If anyone wants to attend that, um, you can go to mass.gov slash C I P. And you can find the link there for the May twenty-seventh meeting. And, uh, normally these are, uh, it normally is kind of a, a five-year plan, but the current year, it, it's currently, they're just doing a one-year plan, uh, due to the pandemic. So, and everything should be focused on really just maintaining and improving safety and reliability.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to our workshops, master plan.
So I, I did a little bit of editing to the document, I didn't send it out because I'm waiting, you all said you had some comments, you had some corrections, uh, some examples, so I didn't wanna make a ton of changes that were contrary to what, uh, a few members seemed to have pretty definitive ideas. Uh, so I wanted to get that input before I made too many changes.
Can I just ask, at the last meeting, and I, I apologize, I don't remember her name, but the very knowledgeable woman that was.
Andrea Adams.
Was at our meeting, um, who I really wish lived in Lunenburg, um, was surprised, was surprised that we couldn't do our requests for proposals, and I'm, I'm wondering if you checked on that?
I did, I spoke with the town manager, and she said the information came directly from the Inspector General's office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I do have, I went through, um, I lost my comments, but I finally found them again, so I'll send those off to you in the morning.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have comments about the master plan at this point? So Adam will wait for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get those out for, for the fourteenth.
Okay, and, uh, A and R plans.
So this was at, at, uh, Mrs. Bercham's request, uh, after the A and R plan for Flacco Roach questioned whether wetlands could be a lucid frontage. Uh, so I did follow up with town council, um, what you have is, is his reply. Uh, our conversation was, yes, they can be in some instances, but it tends to be more extreme. Um, and, and he referred to, uh, the Walker v Gore case, and, and if you read through that, kinda really leans towards, um, answering that in the most vague and legal way.
I thought it was extremely clear, and I thought town council's opinion was very clear. Um, that, that wetlands that do, that prevent access, the question regarding wetlands inland, I think is definitely nebulous.
Yes.
Um, but the question of whether or not wet, wetlands along frontage, which prevent access to the property absent an approved order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, is potentially a lucid, is illusory frontage. I mean, uh, to me, it couldn't have been clearer. Um, so I think that we absolutely can, and I, and I actually took some notes on it. Um, and if you read the decision of particularly, which is Baker versus Town of West Newberry, it couldn't be more clear. Um, it states, the existence of wet, wetlands at the street line prohibiting present adequate access is a physical impediment rendering access illusory. So there's no, it couldn't be more clear. Um, it was not nebulous, or it was very, very well stated. Um, so I, I think, you know, I look back to the, to the one where I had questions about the wetlands. It does say in one of the other decisions that if there were a approved uh, order of conditions that did allow access via crossing the wetlands, that that could be considered access, but absent of that, it is not adequate frontage. Um, it's not simply square footage. And I look back at the property on Reservoir Road, which had that steep, steep grade, and the building official stated, you know, he questioned whether or not it was frontage, in reading the three decisions that council forwarded, it's very clear that that is a reason to deny an A and R plan, as is wetlands that, that obstructs frontage. Um, so, you know, I, I read all three decisions, I read town council's letter, and I think we've got to be more careful when making our A and R decisions. Um, it also talked about, and I don't think that we faced this, but it also talked about the angles associated with frontage, and, and that if, you know, angles potentially can present an A and R plan as not acceptable.
Yeah, I think that our, the way our bylaw reads prevents a lot of that issue. Because i- in that case, it's like, it was twenty feet wide, and it made a series of significant turns.
Mm-hmm.
Where most of our, where we require a minimum of fifty feet of frontage, most of the necks don't get down to that low.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but the, but the decision that they, that he forwarded, and even his own letter, is extremely clear that wetlands that obstruct a frontage is a reason to deny an A or, A and R plan. Um, so, you know, I, I and find, there's another paragraph within the decision for, um, Baker versus Town of West Newberry that states, and this actually overturned a decision of a planning board to approve an A and R plan, they approved it, but the judge overturned, uh, it was, they're appealed by an abouter, and the judge upheld that appeal. Um, because wetlands located along the frontages of lots three and four prevent threshold access from, from the street, and the developer did not possess an order of conditions from the commission as explicitly required by the bylaw. The board committed a substantial error of law by endorsing the plan, where the undisputed facts in the administrative records show that the developer could not demonstrate neither present physical access to the lots, nor the right to cross the wetlands to obtain such access. So it couldn't be more clear.
Well, uh, if I may, um, wetlands come in all different shapes and sizes, I mean, you can have a puddle.
Mm-hmm.
You can have an intermittent stream, you could have the Connecticut River.
You could have a vernal pool.
You could have a vernal pool. I think what we're talking about here is a puddle, where you could fill it with gravel and cross quite nicely, it's not protected by the state, and we have a local bylaw that doesn't even give it a buffer zone.
There were two lots that were affected by wetlands, and one of them I would agree with you, was, was a puddle, but I would not agree with you about the other one. And regardless, if the entire frontage is covered by wetlands, it's not up to us as a planning board to say whether or not those wetlands can be crossed, it's up to the applicant to present us with an order of conditions, and if you read the decisions, it clearly states this. It's up to us, it's up to the applicant to present a, a, an order of conditions saying they have the right to pass those wetlands. So in the case where a frontage is obstructed by a wetland, it is incumbent upon the applicant to ensure that they can cross that wetland.
Right, and you, you just nailed it on the head, the applicant, not the.
But, but.
Planning board, the planning board, we have very specific things we're supposed to look at.
But we do not have to endorse an A and R plan, and actually, we would be remiss if we, if we endorse an A and R plan that the entire frontage is covered by a wetland.
And I would say, it, you know, certainly every case is different. Um, and wetlands unfortunately is very subjective, it's, it's not something that is easily uh, distinguished in terms of, is it perennial stream, intermittent stream, um, you know. So it, it presents a challenge for us, certainly, but the A and R process is something that I've been uh, pretty passionate about, trying to streamline it, make it better for the applicants. Um, easier for the board to handle, um, and this is just something we need to be aware of as we move forward, um.
My, my issue was, in, in, in reading the coun- council's decision, I questioned the, the true accessibility of the lots that were before us. And the reason I did is because their entire frontage was obscured by wetlands. If fifty percent of the, if the frontage was obscured by wetlands, they can still get a driveway in there. But my issue is that there are things that we need to be looking at, because they have to have true, meaningful access. Not illus, I, I can't pronounce that word, what, how do you pronounce?
Illusory.
Illusory, illusory access, and wetlands is potentially illusory access. And I think we need, and, and previously, we had been told that was not the case, that wetlands were not to be considered by the, by the A and R process, and that is incorrect.
And that's, that's something that clearly has changed and, and was not, uh, something that I, I missed in the, in the twenty eighteen case.
Well, we know now, and so we'll just, and, and steep slopes is also an issue, and if you remember, I had significant concerns about that one on Reservoir Road. Um, and then when they came back for the other back driveway, they, I don't know that that lot's ever been developed.
It's, it's still vacant.
Because it wasn't meaningful access.
Yeah. Well, at least now we have a clear understanding and moving forward, we have the case law to back up our position, so. Anything else on the A and R process? All right, moving on to director's items, one oh one Pleasant Street, Adam.
Uh, you know, I thought I, I can't connect to the office, I had the update on their time, um, it took them. They were confused about what we wanted for an extension, but it has been submitted and filed with the clerk, so the time clock is frozen. And, you know, I'm, I was thinking about it this morning while I was in the shower, um, the time clock doesn't exist right now. Because it was filed during the pandemic, and the legislation, oh, no, I'm sorry, it does exist, because they, they stopped that uh, earlier this year, but when the pandemic, with the pandemic legislation, they froze all the time clocks, but that is actually, I believe, been, been turned off. Um, if I remember correctly, he is, uh, about forty days in with the between the setting of the, the filing, the advertising, the hearing, and then it took him about a week to return the, the sheet that we need to sign. So that will start again when he comes back on June twenty-eighth, and we'll have him file it again. And however many days between when, uh, the twenty-eighth hearing is, and he returns the signed, uh, form, will, will take off the clock, and I'll, I'll send out the accounting tomorrow.
Which version of time clock is this, is this?
One thirty-five. It's the subdivision time clock, so it's thirty-five days from filing.
Uh, what's the end result if they, if they hit that?
If the board has not taken action, it would be considered a constructive approval.
Okay, got it.
So that's why freezing the time clock is important, because the days are whittling away. Uh, and if, if you were to get in the ballpark of one thirty-five, if the board was either satisfied that he had met most of it, they could approve it conditionally upon meeting the remainder of it. If the board felt that he was not being responsive, had not met certain portions of uh, what was being required, or didn't have proper engineering, uh, I would advise that the board deny it uh, for, for cause under, you know, whatever the, the cause happened to be. Uh, and he could either, that or he could refile.
And I think it's for clarification, you said that he had some trouble with the paperwork, so did we lose any days in the process?
Yeah, because the, the clock doesn't freeze until it's recorded. So I told the engineer I would send him the paperwork, and I sent it out by ten o'clock the following morning to the email address I had for him. Uh, and then Thursday, I received an email back from him from a different email address that just said, we're asking to freeze the time clock, is this good enough? It said, oh, I need you to fill out this form that I sent you, and I ended up receiving it, uh, the following Monday.
Okay, so we lost a few days, but.
Yeah.
Not a big deal in the whole scheme of things.
No, I mean, a- and in the grand scheme, it, it really isn't, and one would hope that now it will be a smoother process of him getting the form again and, and signing it. Yeah.
And, chapter forty B.
So, uh, you all should have received an email from me about a potential project. Um, I met with, uh, Mr. O'Brien and his representative, uh, and the town manager going on close to two weeks ago now, and, um, Mr. O'Brien is looking to take about nineteen lots of the subdivision he had approved on Howard Street and build three, four-story uh, apartment towers there through the comprehensive permit project, process, and it would be, uh, he's proposing two hundred units to be watered and sewered uh, with the remaining hundred and three lots of the subdivision to remain, uh, separate, a separate development.
So I, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
I had, when I, I have sent an email to Mr. Bernie and to Heather Lemieux. Um, I believe town council has to get involved in this sooner rather than later. Um, the Water District voted not to extend the district, and the Water Commissioners have voted not to, uh, allow the extension of water, because it is outside of the district. Um, the acts of the legislation, uh, which created the Water District are very clear that water can only be served within the district. Um, so any change beyond that would require an act of legislation that would have to be approved by the voters of the Water District. I understand that this is a forty B, but this is existing legis- legislation that created the, um, the Water District itself, the entity, so I believe that town council has to be made familiar with that. Um, and the previous town council, I'm not sure if it's still town council, for the Water District, um, actually agreed that an, an act of legislation might be required. Um, so I think that that needs to be addressed by town council, additionally, only town meeting can, um, change the sewer district. And this project is outside of the sewer district, so I would be very interested to hear town council's opinion um, of that, I know that there was a case in, with the Hollis Hills property in which in which a sewer extension was, um, required by the courts. However, this is a very different situation. Um, this is miles versus, you know, a very short distance. Um, and there's an enormous cost associated with that extension, so I really think, and I hope that council is aware of this and is working on this.
Uh, well, so i- it, there's a couple of things to that, first, Matt, that dog was at Paula's house, your chickens are okay.
Yeah, that was my dog, sorry.
No, uh, I have spoken, both Heather and I met with town council independently, uh, on Thursday and discussed this with him, so he's aware of it. Um, he, we don't have any plans, uh, from Mr. O'Brien yet, so i- it's hard to say specifically what he's doing, but, um, forty B gives very, very wide powers to the zoning board and does specifically include things like water districts and sewer. Uh, specifically called out within the forty B legislation, so, uh, you know, nothing is on the table yet, so there is. Nothing is on the table yet, so there is time to have further discussion on this and I can provide you with copies of the legislation. And I did send you all the forty B handbook, which is worth a read through because it's unlike any other permitting scheme that you've dealt with. The timelines are completely different, the power is completely different, it's really pretty wild. So council is aware of it. Where we are right now is this is. Something that has been said, I'm probably going to be doing this. So with forty B or comprehensive, it's a comprehensive permit under the legislation, under chapter forty. So with a comprehensive permit, before anything is filed with town, you have to find a subsidizing agency. Some arm of the Commonwealth that will fund your project that acts as your bank. And so you have to have your complete project design, you have to have the site plan, you have to have the architecturals, you have to have the unit counts. You have to have a pro forma on, you know, what everything is going to cost, how much money you're going to make, how many affordable units, this, that, and the other thing. You submit that to the subsidizing agency and they submit it out to the community. And the community has thirty days with which to put together comments to respond back to the subsidizing agency. And often within those thirty days, the subsidizing agency will do a site walk where representatives come out and meet. Any public who might come, town officials. Elected officials onsite. They do a a brief or long site walk depending and they talk about the general issues on the site. And then after that thirty day comment period closes and. The public can comment, the various town boards, town staff, anybody who wants to write a comment on the proposal can do so. And that after the comment period is closed, then the subsidizing agency will do their due diligence, their review of the project. The pro forma, all the comments that are submitted and they'll determine whether or not they're going to issue a site eligibility letter. They, I mean, used to, it used to be like a mortgage. If you had a pulse, you could probably get a site eligibility letter. They're a little more difficult to get now, but they're not. Incredibly difficult by any stretch. And so that's probably a sixty to ninety day process after that, so if this were submitted tomorrow, we would probably be looking. At October, November before there was a reasonable filing before the zoning board. And then that review process, the comprehensive permit. Hearing process is probably. A good another nine to twelve months on top of that. So this is really just, we've been made aware of this. We're putting it out there for folks to start sort of chewing on and coming up with their thoughts and comments. Again, town council is aware, he's aware of the extent of the proposal. And as it gets more real and we have more concrete information on exactly what the proposal is. I I imagine he'll be looking to weigh in a little bit further.
I I think it's going to be key and I want to reiterate that he, our water district is very different than most water districts. And if you look at the enabling acts of, I believe it's nineteen thirty nine. For our water district, the verbiage is extremely clear. On how that was created and and I think that's going to be a crucial piece to this puzzle. And and I would really appreciate it if you would direct council to take a look at the enabling acts of the water district.
Who's the water district's counsel, do you know?
Well.
Larkin. Last I knew it was Richard Larkin.
Right, but I know that they are looking on their last agenda, they talked about new council, so. You'd have to check with Fran.
And Fran got same emails all folks, he's aware that that this is out there.
Well, we'll just need to. See how things progress. I mean, clearly it's hard to. Think about something that you don't have a definitive set of plans for.
That's the thing and it's hard to not think about it because you're pretty sure it's coming.
It's the chapter seventeen of the Acts of nineteen thirty nine.
Other comments or. About our potential forty B towers?
Forty B cluster within a forty B.
Where are we on our on our count?
Thirteen units away. That will reset.
Really reset us.
Well. Were to pass, if it were to be built. It would probably cover our affordable housing numbers for the next two census. Censes, census I. Whatever the multiple of senses is. So it it's. It's complex. But I do encourage you all to read through that handbook just so it it gives a really good primer for, and it's written for zoning boards, it's not. It's it's not too heady.
So does the plan go to the ZBA?
Everything goes to the ZBA. No. Except for the power to comment.
All right, so. If a plan, if and when a plan is submitted, you will let us know.
Yes, I mean, you'll you'll be included as one of the people who, one of the groups who has requested to comment.
Okay, thank you.
The eligibility letter goes in or the request goes in. And when the zoning board receives the filing, I believe, under their rules and regulate, request comment from the planning board amongst other groups as well.
Thank you.
And thank you, Adam, for circulating the handbook. I did get a chance to glean through some of it and we are on the list.
Yes, it's it's not rosy, but it's it's information.
All right, moving on to meeting schedule. I had a question about when we're going to go back to town hall.
Yeah.
After June fifteenth.
Okay, so.
The emergency is ending on June fifteenth.
So June fourteenth will be our last remote.
That's correct.
And we will be back in town hall June twenty eighth.
That's correct.
Is there any understanding in terms of are we still going to have a Zoom channel for people?
The the town manager and the IT director and the public access cable committee are. Working to be able to support meetings. They have all the technology. It's a matter of. Shaking it down and making sure it all works and training the videographers to. Be able to manage because I would no longer be managing the meeting, it would be up to the videographer to manage. Because it's it's a matter of it going through. And projecting it on to the television in the in the room and finding a way for for you folks to interact. So it'll be an interesting first. Luckily, the select will have a couple, the select board will have a couple of meetings before us, so they can.
Adam, who's managing that process out of curiosity?
The the transition to the hybrid meetings.
Yes, like like who's kind of logistically. I'm asking for unrelated to planning board reasons, but another town committee, so.
I would check in with either Joe McGlaughlin or Steve Melandrinos.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what about our remote participation for, I mean. My preference is to be in town hall, but.
It would be.
Would allow any one of the members to.
I think it would go back to the. Original policy where if it was a geographic distance. Something like that, you could participate remotely, but there would have to be a quorum of members present physically. You can't make the quorum remotely. I'll I'll have to verify that because it, no one really knows. I mean, one day it was just like, oh, yeah, by the way, we're done with all this coronavirus stuff. Go go back to life as normal. And I expect that. The town, and I don't know this, they have, there's been no official word, but the governor's order of. Vaccinated individuals being able to be mask free indoors and unvaccinated individuals needing to be masked. Would probably stand for town buildings as well. I don't know that there's a way to. Reasonably verify who is and isn't vaccinated, but I think that would be the the tenor of the order.
Okay. Thank you. So June fourteenth will be our last remote meeting. For seven fifty seven Chase Road.
And one fifty Holman Street.
And now one fifty Holman Street, thank you. And June twenty eighth, we have one oh one Pleasant Street and seven eleven Mass Ave.
Correct.
Any ongoing items?
Not that we haven't already talked about.
Need public comment. Don't see any hands raised. Any board comment or concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if the letter went out to Mr. Torgensen and if we received a response.
We received a green card.
Okay, when did we receive the green card?
I would have to look at the date. It was probably a week to ten days after it was sent.
Could you perhaps follow up with a phone call?
I can certainly try.
If if we are unable to get a response.
Yes, it would go to the next, it would it would have to be a recall of some manner.
Okay. All right, if we can just keep, if you can just give us an update on our next meeting on whether or not you've connected. I just think it's unfair to the applicants.
Uh, yeah, I agree. Well, not only that, it's unfair to us as well.
Yeah, it is. It really is. It's unfair to the town that elected him.
So I have a board comment, what, if I may, what what came up during the open space report. And this is nothing new out of my mouth. I've said it. Many times in numerous places in town for probably over a year, probably closer to two or three. That. And actually, I don't remember when the law changed in Massachusetts, but recently the law has been revised to include agricultural commissions. Among the commissions in towns that can hold land basically to. Care and care custody and control, I believe, is the three words. So to give a little bit of history. When the Wetlands Protection Act National came out. The conservation commissions locally were formed. To preside over that and that was it. The Wetlands Protection Act, so wetlands, their associated buffer zones and anything that contributes or flows into. Wetlands and their associated buffer zone. So. Since we've only had an agricultural commission since twenty fourteen. It made sense that, well, I mean, who 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 holds land in Lunenburg? It's it's parks, it's the select board. And it's conservation. Right? I mean, and schools, general.
And cemetery.
And cemetery. So. Basically. The select board, the cemetery commission, the parks commission, the conservation commission and the agricultural commission. So commissions are commissioned for a reason and typically it's got to do with land. Now. Agricultural lands, forests and fields, forestry, agriculture and recreation all fall into agriculture. They. They're allowed in wetlands. The Wetlands Protection Act specifically has exemptions for farming in the law itself. So for the, and and it makes sense why the conservation commission became the go to group to hold land. For one, they were willing, for two, they already did hold land. But we seem to have lost sight of why the conservation commission holds land. It holds land to protect the wetland value, to protect the environment. So. I I've seen in the last few years, it seems like a really strong push for the conservation commission to grab up all kinds of land. They've been transferred from select board, from general municipal. There's been a number of pieces that have been recently acquired specifically through conservation. I don't know the individuals or whatever, but. There's there's a great need for. Town ownership of lands that is not wetland. We we've got town forests, we've got two town forests for a reason. We've got two landfills, they used to have a purpose. We've got all kinds of town property, we've got all kinds of vacant town buildings. So. The agricultural commission is 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 a group of people who are involved in farming, who are involved in the agricultural practices. Who who are in in lumbering and timbering and forest management. These are truly the group of people that these upland areas that are not wetlands should be. Involved with. And and it's it's not like we're trying to take anything and and honestly, to tell you the truth, we don't have permission. From the Board of Selectmen, which is what I understood town council to say the only thing is required. For for the agricultural commission to actually start holding land. We finally got five members and two alternates that are active. And I think that we can easily include seven full members and two alternates, which would bring us up to a nine total. The the discussions about leasing and and contracts for fields and farms, which came up with the two twenty five Pleasant Street. It comes up all the time. We know it's getting farmed. We know who's farming it, but, well, I'm not really sure because it's it's not formalized. There's no vetted formal process. It's not fair for the butters to that property. It's not fair for all the farmers that would like to farm that property. It may or may not be fair for the one person that's been farming it for five to twenty to thirty forever years. There needs to be standardization, a bidding process for 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 ag fields and forests like that. There needs to be some standard control. For other things that aren't wetlands. So I just, I just think that, I think it's time for that discussion to be had. We've tried for years to have a chairs meeting, you know, for everybody to get together and talk about things that affect the whole town. But only pieces of it are ever talked about in individual groups.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more and that's and that's what Open Space wants to do is to get everybody to sit down and talk about parcels of land and what makes sense. So couldn't agree with you more. I will tell you that one of the things that, you know, in the open space plan talks about the importance of preserving agricultural land. And that's why we wholeheartedly endorse the APR restriction on the on the Pierce Tree Farm. So definitely agree with you and and it is something that we are looking at and I will definitely take this back to. To the Open Space Committee and hope and encourage members of the Open Space Committee to get involved in the discussions. You know, once they take place, but we'll definitely bring that back. And and make sure that when we do talk that the agricultural commission is 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 part of that team.
So that's excellent. I appreciate that and 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 whatever I have to say next is nothing against open space. I I'm I'm very glad. I I like the people that are on it. I like the results. I like the discussions. But when it comes to talking about agriculture and forestry and farming, that's all it is, is talk. Everybody says, oh, I love it. I love it. I love it. But then when it comes to do something about it, to help them, to to foster it, to promote it, to protect it. We gotta make some money.
I gotta completely disagree with you there because I gotta tell you, you know, we we definitely looked at the APR restrictions, we've looked at. I gotta completely disagree with you there, because I gotta tell you, you know, we, we definitely looked at the APR restrictions, we've looked at several. Um and
Oh, again, as, as, aside from open space, that wasn't a
Okay, okay, because I would say that we have been trying to protect agricultural land.
I know.
Definitely something that we look at is the agricultural soils and, and looking at that. Um you know, state designated agricultural soils, so it is something Open Space looks at.
I got you, but everywhere else in town, everywhere else in town. I love the farms, I love the agriculture, I love this, I love that, ah, that damn tractor, get out of my way. Ah, that field, nah, that looked better as houses, you know, that should grow some houses. Oh, and, and, yeah, now we've got the governor in Boston breathing down our neck, we need more housing stock. No, we don't.
Yeah, I, I mean, it is a, a challenge to um see how the things that attract people to the community, like the hayfields and the farm, and the stone wall and the scenic roads, in a lot of ways leads to the town's own undoing, because it attracts more people, and those people need a place to live, and they gobble up those areas. Um you know, I, I will say that the town, from my perspective, is passionate about uh preservation, and I don't wanna use the term conservation, because I think conservation means a whole ton of different things to different people. But I will say that the two meetings that I remember being the most widely attended were conservation issues. It wasn't the marijuana discussion, and it wasn't, you know, building new buildings. It was logging at Robbs Hill Road, that conservation piece. I mean, we had citizens at the podium offering to pay for the timber just to keep people out of the woods. We had people crying at the podium, scared about what the impact was gonna be. And then the second issue was the land use policy that just went through town meeting and so on. I mean, we have like seventy people at town meeting on an average year. A hundred people wrote letters about the land use policy. And it doesn't matter which side of the equation you're on, if you're pro hunting, against hunting, firearms, bow hunting, whatever it is. Just the fact that a hundred people chimed in with their opinion speaks volumes about how engaged the town is in these type of issues. Um and something that it just occurred to me as Matt was talking about, you know, forestry and timbering and how that is really related more to farming than conservation. I mean, you, you certainly log parcels and manage forests to uh manage wildlife habitat and things like that, but at the end of the day, timber work and harvesting timber is certainly more like farming than it is conservation. Um and that, that brings up a good point that, you know, perhaps some of these parcels should be ag comm parcels, because certainly when you start talking about logging conservation land, people uh have a lot of concern about it, you know? Um so maybe a parcel like Pleasant Street that's hayfield now, you know, maybe that's where you do your logging um activities, it's just food for thought, but I appreciate the town's passion for anything that has to do with land and preservation and recreation. Uh it always seems to draw a big crowd, so. Um any other comments or concerns? Oh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
All those in favor of adjourning, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And I for myself.
At nine twenty-five.
Excellent.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Good night, everybody.